Order for February 24th. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear me, Father, Lord God, we come as again to say thank you, Lord. Lord, thank you for continuing to keep us safe, continuing to keep our residents safe. Lord, we just ask that you continue to protect our police and our fire and continue to allow us to govern the way that you will allow us to govern in Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick.
Spitali. Vannas. Calwensky. Salinas.
Here.
Tyler Emerson.
Here.
Ray Orpul.
Here, let the record. Before we get started, people in the crowd during public expression, there's a sign-up sheet here. Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Councilman. Announcements in the last couple of weeks, we had a great turnout for 219. Theme, we had a Sinatra singer. I was there, saw several of you there, and it just, the overall mood was great and had a really good time, a lot of positive comments online on social media. Well, we have our first Pickleball tournament at Shepherd Center, Picklemania 2020. It had a $20,000 concert by Pickle. Sponsored by South Shore Visitor Convention Bureau. People even had, one of the players was from Paris, France. And the compliments we received about it were really positive. I stopped by and it was packed, and they're ordering better for next year. The game on Friday, we had a flurry of people stop by. We're going to take a few weeks to get our stuff. Those meetings will begin in March. An update on our meeting with Jay Buckman, CEO of the area, why are going to be able to offer a discount to Hammond employees? We have a five. So probably the next time you guys meet, that'll be fine. Able to offer a discount to the YMCA for all City of Hammond employees is a nice extra perk and signal your significant contribution to that project. You know, the city of Hammond ended up putting in over $15 million into the YMCA project. So happy to do that, and we'll. Due to the fact that we contributed, so, yep. Possible Lakes lineup, we've been working, we're meeting every other week at this point. Majority of the acts locked in and we'll be getting close to announcing acts sooner than later. Some of you noticed, I know Councilman Tyler reached out, that Memorial Park development started this past week. We're working on it and are moving forward. Of course, you have in front of you tonight change to approve on that development as well. Another product of interest, we put north of 18th Street Brewery Park, that's 500 Fayette, and we've had a bit of interest, people calling on that property, people that what we're looking for is mixed-use residential, is on the first floor and residential on the second and third floor, and we've already ideas to do just that. I got to tour the new two with Chief Bernie and our engineer Dean Button last week. It should be completed. Punch list, an open house for all of you to come out and see it. So it looks fantastic in there. It really is going to be a nice addition to the North Hammond-Robertsdale area. Tended the Lake Shore Chamber in there with me, got to introduce some Hammond businesses on behalf of the mayor. This year was hosted up at the Horseshoe Casino, and again, we had four tables worth of city people who came out in support. Good to see everybody there. See if there's anything else. 141st, a lot of our residents have had concerns. Party is moving forward. The mayor met with the proprietor of the business and the owner to develop a plan. I did get to see some bike, and it really does look nice. I think the end result, people are going to be pleased with. They weren't equipped to deal with the city's things. They did a lot of the level of oversight that Hammond provides to make sure our projects are done safely and according to environmental standards, but they got the message. It was a productive meeting. We developed a timeline of things to get done, and I do think that project's going to move forward and ultimately finally get some resolution to that property. Lastly, that we had a meeting, T protocols, we are. But Board of Public Works for parade requests are the parades that are not run by the city, like our St. Patty's Day Parade, for example, that the person is going to meet with the Hammond police, and they're going to go over parade safety considerations, just so we can do everything we can to make sure that parades are as safe as possible. In Patty's Day, trimmed a little bit, just again, for safety considerations more than anything else. Just to announce my seat, we asked for the Second District and the State of the City, which is put on in with the Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce, that is March 5th at the Dynasty at 11 o'clock. All right, that concludes my reports. Thank you. Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
About that pickleball tournament, I went there and watched a lot of it. Impressed by the amount, but really impressed by how the towners say that finding a place like that is rare, and it's one of the best they played in. And I know I sent you this earlier, but as far as the pond, we had two state records caught this year. At the Dowling Park Pond and one inch trout, brook trout, and another one was a 13-inch tilapia. And that, I'd believe, are out there, so I just put that in there. And by the way, I have seen some bald eagles floating around out there, too.
Yeah, when we had the Olympic, a couple of weekends ago, there was a bald eagle flying around back there that day, so very cool.
Did somebody else have a comment? Councilman Tyler?
Scott, I have a couple of questions for you. One, connected to Memorial Park, residents were saying that some of their fences were torn down. Do you know anything?
Let me, I'll take a note of it and happy to get back to you.
I think people are just wondering if they're going to be put back up or if it's, because I'm, I don't know in terms of the location of the fence, maybe it was on park property, maybe it was, I don't know. So if you could find out, that'd be great, thank you.
Be happy to.
And then my other, this 2024, is it public, or is this just for the council, from the?
I believe that is a public document. I don't know just yet, but is, is the nature of your inquiry is like how we're getting it, getting it out there?
Information here, and I know people always ask about different parks that are going to be renovated and, you know, different things that are going, and there's a lot of information here that I think the public would want to know, so just wondering how we're going to advertise it.
All right, I'll check with our, our park leader, Jim Talon, and I'll get back to you on both.
Thank you.
All right.
Councilman Kowinski.
Chief of Staff, good to see you.
Good evening, likewise.
If you have a few minutes during the court, pitch up with you about 341st.
We're preparing a memo actually directly for you that summarizes the meeting, and I have copies of the renderings for you and everything else.
So we'll take a few minutes this week, maybe.
That's absolutely fine.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Item number four.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I ask that we accept the minutes from the February 10th, 2025 meeting and place them on file.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Salinas. Second, Emerson, is there any discussion? Is there any, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by sign. You guys have it. I have five, approval of.
We just did that.
I need my glasses again.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated February 5th, 2025, and ending with claims dated February 19th, 2025, claim number 137 through claim number 1881 inclusive, in the amount of $4,564,216.15, I so move.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez. Was that you, Dan? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Like to amend in claim number 1882 for $100 to the Ponchki Ball Donut Dance at the Jesus Shepherd of Souls Church, which is the St. Andrews Church and Hall in Calumet City. So $100, claim 1882.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion's been made, Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilwoman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there? On the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vannas.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Nine in favor, zero. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick roll. There is amended.
Spitali. Vannas.
Yes.
Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes, motion carries. Public hearings.
Item A. Ordinance number 25-02, Spitali and Tyler, and ordinance appropriating the process of a 108 guaranteed loan and dealing with other matters to the expenditure of loan proceeds for the program year 2025.
Does anybody wish to speak on? Does anybody wish to speak on this issue? Hearing none, public. Item communications. Item number seven.
President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Prom Genie will be having their annual boutique day, which is their annual prom dress giveaway on Saturday, March 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. It is first come, first served, but there will be free dresses, shoes, jewelry, and makeup and hair consultations. So this is for any current 2024, 2025 high school student with a ID or credentials from their school that will allow them to be able to get a free dress, shoes, or jewelry for that day, and that is Saturday, March 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. at the Civic Center, 5825 Soul Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anything under communications? Anybody else have anything under communication? Hearing no communications are closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
I would like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch will meet Wednesday, March 5th, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet 6:00 p.m. at the VFW across from Harrison. That will be on Tuesday, March 4th. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 20th, 6:00 p.m. at the HC3 Community Center, beginning at 6:00 p.m. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, March 11th, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. That is a bilingual program. Hammond Avenue Neighborhood Watch has a meeting coming up, so stay tuned for the specific date on that. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 13th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. Every meeting, I announce Community and Crime Watch in various neighborhoods, and to be quite honest, we're trying to get our neighborhoods engaged in coming to find out what is happening in our neighborhood and preventative measures to inform the residents about. So I encourage everyone to just take an hour, come out, listen to what the policing officer has to say, listen to what the neighbors have to say. You would be surprised at the amount of information that you will receive at one of these meetings, because community is not just about me, it's about all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody? Councilman Spitali.
Bring out 2502.
Thank you. Does anybody? Community reports. Anybody else have anything under committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine.
Ordinance 25-. Spitali and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of a Section 108 guaranteed loan and dealing with other matters pertaining to loan for program year 2025.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 2502.
Second. Motion's been made. Is there any discussion? Councilman Spitali.
Section 108 loan funds, the start in the sports park, and the extension purchase.
Does anybody else? Does anybody else have anything under discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Yes.
Spitali. Vannas.
Yes.
Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, the more in favor zero.
Ordinance sponsored by Calumet. Ordinance number 9643 of the City of Hammond, as it pertains to the classification of vehicles subject to municipal vehicle excise tax pursuant to Indiana Code 6-6-5-2A.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 2503.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
DMV flagged for the addition of a many trucks now, and the military vehicles were added.
Is there any? Is there any further? Hearing no further discussion. Call.
Alexander. Spitali. Vannas. Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler. Emerson. Raycos. Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, motion carries, nine in favor.
President. For final passage.
Thank you, clerk. Action of ordinances.
Ordinance number 25-04, Spitali and Tyler, and lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to amend the plan in order to provide orderly growth and development within the city, all comprehensive land use plan as amended, for property known as 5911 through 5971 Nobo Avenue, 5919 through 5963 Raycos, and 1339 Island Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for first and second passage of 25-OR, oh, four, sorry. I refer to the hearing on March 10th at 5:15 p.m.
Councilman Tyler, Brian Poehn, do you want that on that day?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I know it wasn't on the agenda, but we added it. So the most, the Councilman Tyler and Salinas, is there?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just so we are all aware, this is to reclassify, rezone parts of the Memorial Park area to go from a recreation, recreational facility, sorry, to go from a recreational area to residential district, so that we can move forward with the Memorial Park development plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by.
Aye.
Item number 11.
Item 25R-04, a resolution of the common, sponsored by Councilman Tyler, a resolution of the common council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, approving Plan Commission Resolution Number 2025 through 01, as a written order in finding effect, approving redevelopment Commission Resolution Number 2024-17, as a declaratory that designated the City Hall redevelopment area and approved the redevelopment plan for the Gateways redevelopment area pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14 and the Administrative Code 50IAC8.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Passage of Resolution 25R-04.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler. Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion?
Councilman Salinas, second.
I'm sorry, Councilman Salinas, with second.
Mr. President. This is the council agreeing to the determination of the Plan Commission to establish the City Hall redevelopment area, which would be located just to the north of us. If you pass by there now, you'll be able to see the rendering of what Lyons Commons will look like in the future, so excited about this development. It's been two or three years in the making now, so excited to move forward with this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any? Clerk Golick roll call on the resolution.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vannas.
Yes.
Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes, let the record show.
Resolution 25R, sponsored by Councilman Raycos, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Gallos, Gala, Gala Logos, I'm sorry.
Gallegos.
Gallegos, thank you. I apologize for the mispronunciation. Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
Move for adoption of 24R-05.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Raycos. Councilwoman Vanez, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
This is a reappointment to the commission, she's been at, I think this is her second term.
Is there any further discuss? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vannas. Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor.
Item C. Resolution number 25R-06, sponsored by Councilman Tyler, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Move for passage of 25R-06.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
As clerk, is a resolution confirming of Ms. Ann Herbert as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission. This means that she will be on the commission until December 31st, 2028, and this is her third?
Maybe even fourth.
Either third or fourth reappointment. I know she takes pride in the service that she provides the city, and I think everybody loves her and the work that she does for us, so thank you, Ann, and congratulations on your reappointment.
Is there any? Is there any? Hearing none, Clerk Golick.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vannas.
Yes.
Calwensky.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Yes.
Orpul.
Is there any?
Item D. Resolution 25R-7, sponsored by Councilman Raycos, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Albert Ochoa as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
Move for adoption of 24R-7.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Raycos. Councilwoman Vanez, is there any discussion?
Mr. President, the appointment of Albert Ochoa to the Hammond Human Relations Commission, I believe that's his second term as well.
Any further discuss? Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Clerk.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vannas.
Yes.
Calwensky.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show.
President Orpul, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item.
President.
Councilman.
Make a motion to reappoint Rosemary Seawazdilla to the Hammond Port Authority Board.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council. Kowinski, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I believe most of the council knows of Rosemary because of her work with Redevelopment Commission in the past and her work with the Port Authority. She's also a volunteer at the Pulaski Park Senior Center, as well as very active in her church. commission in the past and her work with the Port Authority. She's also a volunteer at the Pulaski Park Senior Center as well as very active in her church with the Saint Vincent de Paul group, providing food and clothing to the community at large. Thank you for the resume. Thank you.
Any further? Any further discuss? On the motion to?
Alexander. Spatelli. Vines. Kalwinski. Salinas. Tyler. Emerson. Rakos.
Zero opposed. Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. Yes, I make a motion to reappoint Janice Poca to the Hammond Community Corporation. This will be her second three-year term.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council man Tyler, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick.
Alexander. Spatelli. Vines. Kalwinski. Salinas. Tyler. Emerson. Rakos.
Yes. Favor zero opposed. Does anybody else have? Does anybody else have anything under? Hearing none, known as closed. Item. You got? Please. Dress, the first. Senator.
Good evening. My name is Queen Alexander. I'm at 1015 Moss Street in Hammond. I was listening to your last meeting because I was not with my daughter. And the mayor was very rude. The mayor was very rude because she asked a simple question. That question because Janet Vines called for a vote on that question. I understand you guys are trying to get the meeting and I thought for sure you would say something, but you didn't say anything. You are elected by the citizen of Hammond. The citizen of Hammond has a say on what goes on within this council. You you as the council, which I know Kalwinski was not here, but the other ones were. And that was very rude for him to say. My daughter couch and she fell down a flight of steps. And I and I'm letting you know that.
Thank you. The second is, hang on. Enrique. Meza. Let me get this. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. First, I leaders for giving us a moment of your time. My name is Enrique Meza and I am honored as the new president of Hammond Optimus Youth Sports. Sorry about that. I am the new president of Hammond Optimus Youth Sports. An organization that has been a pillar in our community for over 70 years. Our mission extends far beyond the game itself. We are committed to shaping young athletes into leaders, instilling values of teamwork, discipline, and perseverance. I step into this role with a deep dedication to continuing this legacy while also expanding access, improving our programs, and strengthening our partnership with the city. Youth sports are more than just a pastime. They bring families together, build character, and teach life that extend far beyond the field. To not only to introduce myself, but to share seek your support in making this a reality. Running station requires an immense amount of effort and sacrifice, something I know many of you can relate to. But we do even investing in our youth and building a future for our community. More than just a recreational sports league. We want to establish Hammond as the premier youth, the premier youth baseball and softball hub in Northwest Indiana. However, we face challenges. Over the years, recreational baseball has been impacted by the rise of travel baseball. While provide valuable opportunities, they have also led to the decline in participation at the rec ball level, increased the overall cost of baseball, increased the overall and made access to quality coaching and competition more difficult for many families. Baseball was once one of the most accessible sports in America. All a ball and a glove and kids could be found playing in the streets, in the empty lots, and anywhere with enough space to create a game. Today has faded. Travel ball has become a play to pay system for those without financial needs. We want to change that. Our mission is clear, to make baseball and softball everyone once again. We want to ensure financial status has access to the best coaching resources and opportunities to develop their skills and their dreams. Whether they want to play for fun at the highest levels, we want to, we are committed to providing them a pathway to doing so. How will we do this? At Beaver Region Baseball. So multiple ways of doing this. We've partnered up with the Region Collegiate Baseball, the Little Calumet Beavers in order to bring baseball clinics, coaching clinics to develop new coaches, to develop, to give them a better better system, a better structure so they can develop along with the players.
Mr. Meza, even minutes, if you wouldn't mind staying for these last two when it comes to Optimus Baseball, there's three of our baseball I co hundred years and actually was the president and Councilman Ham over there was involved. So Council, I mean, Mr. Miller.
If I might like you have prepared your remarks to the council, if that's agreeable.
And we could put them into the record too as well. The next.
Greetings. What the council did and it was were relegated to the basement. It was a as what a performance. You're saying we're horrible. I then person who does something how we a video of he or should I say so please behavior. Last time we would see a get around it, but no, not listening to the why right now? How is paying off on right now? So the for what the mayor that's 300 I can go to get a thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Our last. You're on.
Good evening, elected officials and distinguished council president. My name is Matthew Markham and I've been for years and I support the now I not historic. The trees are not 5,000 ball these over areas like Yellowstone and goes on a it is even Siri tells you to turn around. Even the trees don't if you ever the perfect place for you. You trail roof and shingles. It is not not is a mosquito that you stay prior East Woods is the only red or white wine, but fight or flight. And for on by stolen car. Have you tried bit by and if you to the nearest burnt speak to you here tonight and thank you for supporting and maintain your dignity through represent because we this policy. The last Tom McDermott, I wish he was here right now to shake his hand for remaining bill to go for all. Thank you.
Thank you. With that from new adjournments. Motion's been made.